Everyone, thank you for attending our Thursday, June 3, 2021.
This conference will now be recorded.
I ask that we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay, our next section would be if there's any additions or changes to the agenda. Anybody have anything? Hearing none, we will move on. Our public comment is our next section. And I'll let Donna talk about those who wish to do any public comment.
Sure. Good evening. There's a public comment section at the beginning and at the end of the meeting. And if anyone in attendance would like to make a public comment, you can write your name in the chat box. It's the little bubble and you will be recognized. If anyone has anything at this time, if you want to just speak up, otherwise, we can recognize you again at the end of the meeting. And right now, there doesn't appear to be any public comments. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. Next, Andy, I'll let you do the introduction.
Okay. So without further ado, the Chairman of the Board of Selectmen had requested that we reach out to Deep for a Conservation Officer to come speak to us for this time of the year. We have many trails throughout our town, a lot of encounters with wildlife and pretty much to do and what not to do. But with that, I'll introduce and help me with this so I get it wrong. I think it's Eugene Defenbach.
Ethan Bach, close enough.
Okay.
My name is Eugene. I'm a Conservation Officer with the DEEP. And I appreciate you asking us to come here. Hebron is in my patrol area. I patrol the southeast. So usually it's on a peak and shift. Let's just say that's the Connecticut River over to Rhode Island. And, you know, Lebanon, Columbia is kind of that top line of the southeast there. So it's a lot of, lot of area. So we just got to touch on a few things that like Andy said are pretty common this kind of time of year. As I should add, of course, Connecticut has a lot of outdoor space to offer. Hebron has a lot. We've got the state forests, various pockets there, Grayville Falls, Holbrook Pond, Raymond Brook, all those trails. And this doesn't just happen on trails or, you know, in forests either. So with that access for everybody, which is awesome, and the fact that more people than ever are going outside, which is also awesome. We just happen to have more person animal interactions than ever before. So a couple of things I want to touch on is, and like I said, this is all already known to all of you. I apologize, but I believe this is getting kind of dispersed out. So a lot of times, these rabies vector animals such as, you know, for example, a baby raccoon, which this time of year, people are felling trees, they're getting, you know, tree work done. There's nests in there. Baby raccoons, I understand, are incredibly cute. But people don't realize that when they're trying to help, they're picking up these animals and they're trying to, you know, fix the situation if they fell out of the nest. They're really, that's like the worst thing they can do because as soon as, you know, a rabies vector animal has human contact, we have to test that animal for the safety of the person. And that involves you have to euthanize the animal. So people don't even realize that what they're doing is, you know, basically making sure that animal dies. So I'd say if you find, if people in Hebron find after a storm, animals that fell out of nest, especially rabies vector animals, don't touch them. These animals are resilient. They will rebuild a nest. You know, the mother will gather them back up. They'll take care of it. You know, you gotta let nature do its thing there. If you see, let's say, like I like to use the raccoons because it sort of just happened, not in Hebron. But a tree comes down, that's on top, on top of a power line, you know, it's intentionally cut down. There's a raccoon nest inside. And the best thing you can do is just leave it alone. The mother will regroup. She'll find a new nest. She'll, you know, she'll take care of it. The other one is, big one is bears. I don't know, has anyone here seen any bears in their yard lately?
Some residents have in town.
Okay. I didn't know if anyone on this call happened to, you know, have one recently because I know there was one down towards, you know, the Colchester line there. I'd say, you know, we need to make it as non-conducive for bears in our yards as possible as they, as they start to associate people with food. That's where the real problems come in. Just like in campsites, when people leave their Twix bars where there's smores out. Of course, the bear that eats grubs all day is going to say, oh, I like that a lot better. So as they associate our houses with food, that just, they start going to more houses, it becomes a problem. You know, people might not think there's bears in their area because there's not until someone, you know, miles away starts, has that food out or food sourced. They don't realize it gets closer and closer. And there is one, I have seen pictures of it in Colchester area, you know, Jeremy River area. So they're not far away. So we just need to make it non-conducive. I would say there is a bear reporting and moose reporting tool on the DEEP website. It's worth doing. I don't think you need to report, the people need to report. If they see a bear in the woods, you know, they don't need to call the emergency hotline. If it's just, you know, going through the woods, doing what bears do. But if, you know, it does start to be a hazard to, to your property or your pets, that's, you know, that's different. See, so we touched on rabies vector bears.
How about baby fawn?
Oh, that's right. That, yep, thank you. This time of year especially, the spring, all the babies are being born and people are going to find fawns. And they're going to think they're abandoned, which, you know, seems normal. They're alone. They're curled up. Again, like all these animals, they look real cute and people want to help and they think, oh my gosh, it's been left alone. Well, no, the mother is probably, you know, 100 yards away in a bush watching. And for anyone that didn't know, Danny, you probably knew this if you were the fishing game constable for the town, fawns don't have a natural scent. So as a protective mechanism, the mother is trying to, you know, attract the predators to her and protect the fawn. So when people see fawns and they, and they scoop them up thinking they're doing them a huge favor, they're really not. They're taking away the fawn from the mother who's probably right around the corner. And I obviously want caveat that unless you see a fawn abandoned and it's clear there was some sort of roadside, you know, road incidents on the side of the road, that's a little different. But if you just see it in the yard or in the bushes, like so many people see this time of year or off the side of the trail, that's, the mother's almost certainly right nearby. So those are the three, three big things I wanted to touch on. Do you have any others?
Oh, yes. Is it natural for people to see wildlife this time of year out during the day? I used to get calls, you know, I saw this or I saw that. And it's like.
Absolutely, absolutely. There's always this conception that certain animals are, you know, they're nocturnal. And yeah, some animals are primarily nocturnal, but they do roam around in the day. And that is not necessarily a sign of illness or sickness. And that, that's a good question because the key, like the key concept I like to use to explain is that if an animal, you know, we want, for one, we want to leave wild animals wild, like so that we don't want to pick them up and scoop them up. But if an animal is not afraid of you, obviously there's a perception, like if a bear is charging at someone, which is very rare. But, you know, if a fox or a coyote is not getting away from you, that's usually a sign of sickness. Like they shouldn't be pulled up on the side of someone's barn and they should, you know, the farmer should not be able to walk right up to that coyote. That's a sign of illness. But it is normal and you can, you can definitely expect to see animals out and about during the daytime that you might think, oh, what the, you know, they did all their hunting at night or, no, they do get around in the daytime. And the key there is if it's, you know, not afraid of humans, that's the biggest thing. It just, you know. But I got a caveat. Like the little fawn is just gonna, that's totally healthy is also just gonna sit there. But I think we can get the idea, right, that it's not like a wild animal.
Pathogens, people that, you know, have bird seed or whatever on their decks and they get squirrels, raccoons that are coming up to eat, you know, the food off the deck. Are there issues with potential pathogens from the feces and stuff?
I mean, I wouldn't go as far as to say that, you know, you don't just want to leave your food source, let's say. I have encountered people, not in Hebron, but in very close by towns that have left food bowls out for coyotes and the dog uses the same food bowl because it's an outdoor dog. Like that's, that's a problem. That's like definitely exchange of fluid and possibly pathogens there. But in terms of bird seed, I wouldn't be just worried about that because it's, you know, there's no bite. You're not getting bitten by an animal. Maybe, you know, sweep it off the deck so it's not an attractive source to wild animals coming up on your deck. But I would not be necessarily concerned about pathogen transfer to your pet. Or things like that.
Dogs, you know, people especially walking, you know, the rails to trails or what have you. What are, what are the laws or whatever concerning dogs? And what are the issues that you see at times with, with, you know, pets?
Good question. So the law is seven foot, maximum of seven foot leash length for dogs on state properties. Not possible what it is on town property, but I mean, I would imagine it's fairly similar. But yeah, seven feet, which is a pretty normal sized leash. If you're walking your dog on the Salmon River, let's say, or, you know, airline trail, and they have to be leashed at all times. Where we see issues is people think, I have a dog myself, so I understand you always want to think, oh, my dog is the best. People think their dog is better behaved. You know, I see someone without the dog on a leash and it's running around. There's no one around. Okay, that's one thing. But when it's a busy, busy Saturday Grayville Falls or that, that area down there next to our, you know, Salmon River State Forest, people think my dog's going to be totally fine. He heals perfectly. And then it gets triggered by another dog that, you know, it's never encountered before. And then that's where you have to start to have problems. So seven feet leash at all times. And then you did have an incident, not in Hebron, but nearby at Glastonbury the other day where a dog got to a coyote. So people need to remember that it's not likely that coyotes and wild animals are going to come right up to you. Because like I said, they tend to want to avoid humans and our dogs. But if one is not well, it is definitely a risk. And you run the risk of your dog running off into the woods. The other one that is, you know, there is potential if bears would see a dog coming at it as a threat and you could, then you get the bear amped up. Whereas had it been, had you been walking on the trail with your dog on a leash and you just walked right by, you might not even know the bear was there. Let's say that it was off leash, it ran off. We'll add one exception. Because on the DEEP, you can do hunting training at the WMA, let's say, with on a leash. But that's for training hunting dogs only. But anybody else needs to have your dog on a leash.
One last question, or at least from me, and we have one of our town constables on, also on our board. But firearms, every once in a while, Nextdoor Digest is one of those local, I'm not even sure what you would call it, you know, I heard people shooting, this or that. Did you want to get into what is legal? What, you know, can people who have like a handgun permit, carry handguns? What, what, just let people know what's, thank you.
Absolutely. The, the first one that comes to mind that, you know, people that come from the city that move out here to the country and they hear shooting, they're not used to it. With hunting, firearm hunting, there is a 500 foot rule where you can't hunt with a, let's say, a rifle within 500 feet of a house or a building with animals or anything clamable. Except, you know, you can get a that doesn't belong to your own house, right? But there's a 500 foot rule for firearms. That, a lot of people get confused because they think that's just all shooting. So you can set up safely. There's no minimum distance, let's say, for your home shooting range. As long as you're shooting in a safe direction and it's a safe setup, like you have a berm or something or, you know, dig a pit like that. There is no minimum distance for that. And I know there, I have heard of complaints haven't come to us, but I've talked to other police in the area and that's a common one. You're not allowed to have weapons on state property. Handguns on state property. So the one, you know, the exception being if you have a revolver, if you're revolver deer hunting, which I have never encountered, you have the proper licenses for that. But the big one there is, I think that I wanted to, you know, highlight is that 500 foot rule only applies to hunting, not just shooting.
Even with a permit, you can't have a handgun on state property in a state park?
Correct.
I didn't realize that. Thanks.
For people who have issues that need to get ahold of DEEP, DEEP, what's the process?
You can get like an urgent complaint. I would just, fastest, best way to call our emergency hotline, which I will is, I will, people can look it up. I mean, there's not a someone has to write it down right now. There's a DEEP 24 hour emergency hotline, which is just like a police dispatch. That's our dispatch center. There's always someone staffing it. And they'll get it to us quickest. A lot of people, you know, might know one of us or, you know, I know people that call me. They have an issue. If I'm not working, you know, I have to pass on to someone else. Or then I might have, if I am working, I might be in Essex and the call, you know, the issue might be in Volentown or something. So it might be a while before I can get there. So the best is just to call the DEEP emergency hotline. It's staffed 24 hours a day and they'll get it out to us.
Okay, that number's available on, online. They just look up DEEP.
It's 860-424-3333. And if you just type in on, you know, Google or something, CTDEEP hotline will bring you right to that, that page.
Perfect. I don't know, Mark or Peter or Andy, any other questions?
No. Thank you, Eugene. Thank you very much. You're very informative.
Thank you for having me on here and see someone, some of you all out in the field or around town.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Thanks a lot. My pleasure.
Thank you. Okay. Our next, we have.
Next is appointments, appointments and resignations. And we have a couple. We have a few of the people in attendance here tonight with us. So the first one is Ram Board of Education's appointment. The closing day for the nominations for this position was May 28, 2021. Tries his letter from Mr. Mike Morris, Republican expressing his interest in serving on the Ram Board. And there is a proposed motion and Mr. Morris is here with us tonight.
Okay, great. Mr. Morris, Dan Larson, Chair of the Board. Would you like to say a couple of words to the, to the members about your interest for this position?
Yeah, I appreciate you giving me the time tonight. I was a friend of, of the former board member and I always felt very confident in what he did on that board and his representation of it. And I felt, you know, in his absence, that I would like to be able to step in and maybe carry through the rest of his term and, you know, follow through on the things that I know he would find important and think was valuable to the, you know, Hebron High School and, or sorry, the Ram High School and Ram Middle School. And I think at the end of the day, you know, I'm mostly just interested in making sure that we, you know, have the best experience for our kids with the best education that we can possibly provide with a, you know, at the, the most feasible and responsible cost that we can for the town.
Perfect. Thank you. Okay, I'd like to make the motion. Could that come back up, please? Like to make, move that the Hebron Board of Selectmen appoint Mike Morris to the Ram Board of Education to a term to run until December 1, 2023. Any discussion?
Yes, Chairman. Yes. I'm going to shut my camera off. I'm having a little trouble with my audio today with my camera. So give me just one second. I'll shut that off. Just want to make sure everyone can hear me. Yeah, I, I, first of all, Mike, thank you so much for stepping up. And I've known Mike for a number of years and thank you for your service to our country. And obviously your willingness to serve the community. And I, I think Vin would be really proud that you were willing to step up. And I just wanted to thank you, all for your willingness to do that and, and express my full support for this, for this motion and for his, for his, his.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Mike, I don't know you, but if Peter recommends you, that's good enough for me. I'm the School Resource Officer at Ram, so obviously that's very important to me and my wife's a member of the board. So I welcome you there and it's, they're always doing good things. So I hope you can bring something to it and help everybody keep going in the right direction and bring the same passion and enthusiasm that Vin had, which probably is difficult for anybody to do. So.
Yeah, I agree. Thanks. Appreciate that, Mark.
Okay, closing discussion, all in favor, sing by saying aye. Mark?
Mark Rivera, aye.
Peter?
Peter Caspar, aye.
And myself, Dan Larson, aye. Thank you for serving. Welcome aboard.
Thank you very much. I really appreciate it.
Our next one, good, Andy?
Yes. So next appointment would be to the Douglas Library Board of Trustees. Attached is correspondence from Colleen Brennan, our Republican, expressing interest in being appointed to the Douglas Library of Hebron Board of Trustees. Also attached is a recommendation from the Library Association along with the proposed motion. And I see a smiley Colleen Brennan on the meeting.
Well, thank you for that lovely introduction and thank you to Mike, by the way. Yes, I have been on the Douglas Library Trust for a number of years and have enjoyed participating in my community in that regard. And I very much would, would be honored to work on the board to continue to increase the advocacy for the library and the programs offered locally in our community.
Perfect. Thank you. Okay, that motion again, please. Move that the Hebron Board of Selectmen appoint Colleen Brennan to the Douglas Library Board of Trustees to a term to run until December 2022. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, Peter?
Yes.
Yeah, I, I, there's two, the people that I know, which is, which is exciting. Thank you so much for your willingness to step up. It's, it's hard in the community to get enough good people to volunteer. So when, when there are people like you that are willing to do that, it's very much appreciated. And thanks for being a good teacher too.
Oh, thank you. I appreciate that.
Okay. Colleen, where, where are you a teacher?
I teach in Glastonbury.
Okay.
I actually.
Ram, I've never seen you. Okay.
Oh, yeah, I don't teach in Hebron. I, I taught Peter's nephew, as a matter of fact.
The Caspers are far and we spread out in two communities. And Mark, my brother has six kids. I only have five. My brother has six. So the Caspers are spread out into two towns. So yes, we.
Wow.
I don't know. Should we tell Peter he's got to get busy?
My brother won. My brother won.
Okay. Hearing no further discussion. Mark?
Mark Rivera, aye, and welcome aboard, Colleen.
Thank you so much.
Peter Caspar, aye.
And myself, aye. Thank you again very, very much for stepping forward and being.
My pleasure.
Our next would be the Town Managers' Report.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So it's probably no surprise to some of you. I've been working quite a bit with the local and the state police regarding the accident that took place at the Church of the Holy Family. It's deemed a hit and, hit and run at this point. So not a lot to say about that. We're working on it with the police. They've got three of their special units working diligently, looking at footage. They actually were out on Route 85 today during the timeframe, stopping cars and giving them information if anybody saw or knows anything to contact true K or major crime. So we continue to, to try to, you know, put together what happened and try to figure out if we can get some resolve there. So it started around last Thursday and I'll get updates pretty much every day. So Mark knows as well. We've been working on that. Excuse me, Donna and myself met with Kerma. We did our annual review of our, our coverage with our insurance carrier along with the schools. That went well. As far as the Parks and Rec Director, the interviews were finalized. I've made an offer to the top candidate that was selected by a committee and also in a second interview with myself and the Chairman of the Parks and Recs Commission. So that'll be on the Board of Selectmen's next agenda for confirmation. And the information will be in the packet along with the person's resume. We're working to close out the end of the fiscal year. We'll be reviewing back taxes and compiling a list and sending out demand letters for those that are delinquent. We're working with the Public Works Department to try to get them some temporary help right now. They're down two of their top men with, two guys are out with operations. So they're busy, so they could use everybody they could get. So we're trying to work with them. We're still monitoring and following the state budget. Hopefully they're going to try to wrap that up. But it looked as of today, they're kind of going separate ways right now. So we're hoping to have some closure on that, but that might be a little bit longer than expected. Working with the audit review with the Finance Director, as you'll see, they met with the Board of Finance last Thursday to go over that. I'm happy to say that the Parks Department, Erica Santos underneath Rich Calargo presently, applied for a grant and we did receive it. It's in the amount of $25,000. The acronym is C S D E, but what it really comes down to is called a summer enhancement, excuse me, a summer enrichment expansion grant program. So that's 25,000. a summer enrichment expansion grant program, so that's $25,000, so we're hoping that that will offset some of the costs for the programs this summer for the people that are attending. We continue to work with the Town Planner, we have grants out there for brownfields and we continue to work on the steep grant, we're gonna meet out there on Wall Street, that sidewalk project with the State Historic Preservation People along with John Barron and try to see if we can't get some resolve and move that forward, right now that's kinda stalled due to that historic designation that's there. And then last but not least, we're looking to move that Parks and Rec Union along, the next meeting is June 24th, so I'm hoping, you know, sometime shortly after that, we'll bring that to the Board to ratify that, so that's what's been going on. Not sure if there's any comments regarding any of those issues.
No. Anything new on the destruction at the bathrooms at Vets Park?
Nothing new on what took place, but we do have a local plumber that has volunteered to either both do the work and supply the new fixtures or at the very minimum do the work at no charge to the town, so we're working, working with him to get that moving forward.
Andy, is that Mike who's doing that?
Yeah, I'm not sure of the gentleman's name, he's dealing with Rich Clark, I don't know if Donna has his name or not.
Yeah, I, I saw, I saw him over there, Andy, that's incredible that he would volunteer to do that.
Yes.
Yes, I don't know the gentleman, but.
I do, he's actually, he's actually our plumber, so wow, I'm glad to hear that. That was a lot of damage.
Yeah. It's, it's. It's just frustrating.
I don't think the cameras were working.
I think they did something to him, is what I heard.
Okay. I guess the next would be our old business.
Yes, under old business, if you remember at the last four seconds meeting, we were gonna look to probably schedule some workshops with the code group to move, do a workshop to figure out how we wanna move forward. I'm not sure if any of them are on here tonight. I don't see anybody. So I don't know how you wanna proceed, Mr. Chairman, we could reach out to them through my office and pick some dates and shoot those out to the Board of Selectmen.
That would probably be the easiest thing and then see, see what works.
Okay. We will do that.
Okay. Any other old business? Hearing none, I guess you're moving to new business?
New business. So under new business, it's approved agreement with the Wyndham Chamber. And I was hoping Neil Anwick, the Chairman of EDC was gonna be here, but I don't, I don't think it's imperative, I don't see him on here, but I can handle it. So we've been working quite a bit with the EDC and we were contracted with John Gazinski, but his firm has kind of changed hands and John kinda had to went out on his own, so we are looking, we being the EDC Board, looking to possibly go in a different direction. So what they're looking to do is break this into two parts and what you have here is listed, approved agreement with the Wyndham Chamber, the Economic Development Commission is recommending entering into an agreement with the Wyndham Chamber of Commerce to provide services to the Town of Hebron, pretty attached proposal contract, proposed contract, I apologize. The total cost of services for one year will be $8,190 for 234 hours. So to summarize that, that's similar to some of the stuff John would do, but we're even getting more stuff done through the Chamber, so we're trying to, we're already a member, we're trying to partner with them at least for this aspect and then the mindset would be, we're gonna move forward to try to hire a consultant to do more of the branding and the sales pitch for the Town of Hebron. We feel that hasn't been really done as, as well or as much as it should have been in the past, so we're trying to, you know, right the ship here and, and break this into two different agreements, but right now to the one in front of you is the approved agreement with the Wyndham Chamber and we'll be putting proposals together and doing an RFP, which is, was in the packet to show you and then when we get, hopefully some successful candidates, we'll be coming back to you for approval on that. So I, I think I did at least to me a pretty good job of explaining what EDC is trying to do and it's, it's not a secret, I know John, Suckman Collins has been, he's a member, liaison to that group, these were some of his early on comments when he started working with that group that we needed to be branded and have a sales, you know, pitch, so they're, they're moving in that direction.
Okay. I see that motion, please. Okay. Move the Hebrew Board of Selectmen to approve the agreement between the Chamber of Commerce Incorporated Wyndham Region and the Town of Hebron as presented and authorized Andrew J. Tierney, Town Manager, to sign the agreement. Opening it up for discussion, I actually read through the entire document, seems pretty reasonable, it seems like it's worth giving it a shot. We've done stuff with the Willamette Chamber before, they've taken over the, the Maplefest and, you know, they actually had, you know, pretty good success with it until COVID hit. So, I mean, they, they've shown their worth and they are, or Hebron is a member of that, so that's kinda my take on it. Mark, repeat?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I, I strongly support this agreement for the very reason that they've been a valuable resource to Something Simple, they're always helpful. During, during the Maplefest, the, the contribution they make is, is incredible and it's not always easy to satisfy everybody at the Maplefest, so just in dealing with them as Something Simple, and, and my wife Jessica, she raves about them, so I think this is a good move.
Mr. Chairman? Yeah, I, I, I'm a fan of the Wyndham Chambers, well, I definitely think we have to try something different and, and put our energies in other areas and obviously they have a track record of being quite a resource for the broad community in which we live, so I, I think it seems like a good move as well.
Okay. Hearing no further discussion, all in favor of the motion as read? Pete?
Yeah, Peter Casper, aye.
Mark?
Mark Rivera, aye.
And myself, aye. Our next thing, the tax rate bill.
Yes, so after a budget gets set, this is something that happens every year, so this we're looking to approve and sign the tax rate bill, the Board of Finance was scheduled and did meet and set the mill rate at their meeting on May 27th, 2021. The tax rate bill will be finalized by the Revenue Collector, we had the draft attached at the time, the packet went out, but there's a proposed motion for that. And then the actual document is in the packet as well for your review.
Okay. Do we know what that tax rate was? Just so we can broadcast it out.
The mill rate is 36.33.
Thank you very, very much. Okay, the motion then, please. Okay. Move that the Hebrew Board of Selectmen approve and sign the tax rate bill dated June 3rd, 2021, as presented by the Revenue Collector and as an informational note, that tax rate would be 36.33? Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, Mark?
Mark Rivera, aye.
Peter?
Peter Casper, aye.
Myself, Dan Larson, aye. Our next thing would be the year-end transfers, Andy, you wanna discuss them at all?
Yes, I would, so once again, at the end of the year, we've made some transfers, there's an amount, 2,000 under that I'm able to do as a Town Manager, but the ones higher than that get brought to the Board of Selectmen for approval. So approve the fiscal year 2020, 21 year-end transfers, attached is a summary of the year-end intra department and inter department transfers, the transfers were scheduled to be approved by the Board of Finance, which they did at their May 27th, 2021 regular meeting, additional transfers will be presented at future meetings, so there's a proposed motion on both.
Okay, so the first one, move the Hebrew Board of Selectmen to approve the intra department transfers. For fiscal year 2020, 2021, in the amount of $40,418.36 as presented. Any discussion? Hearing none, Mark?
Mark Rivera, aye.
Peter?
Peter Casper, aye.
And myself, Dan Larson, aye. And the second one, move that the Hebrew Board of Selectmen approve the inter department transfers for a fiscal year 2020, 2021, in the amount of $253,188.7. Again, any discussion? Hearing none, Mark?
Mark Rivera, aye.
Peter?
Peter Casper, aye.
And myself, aye. Okay.
Thank you very much.
Next would be our draft agenda. That's for June 17th. And again, if anybody has any things to add or what have you, get it, get it into the office and they will get it added to the agenda.
Hello, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, yes, Mark.
I would just like to bring this up to see if Peter and you, I, I could get your support on this, I've been approached by the veterans, actually a small number of veterans, that they wanted their, to have their taxes frozen due to getting older and they have actually crafted their request to be, if you're a veteran of a foreign war, so you had to be in combat, you have to have lived in Hebron for 25 years and he, I think they had one other, but like they already had to be registered as DD 214, Andy, was that what we had discussed earlier?
I think there's, like you said, there was an age amount they were considering.
Yeah, at 70 years, 70 years of age, 25 years in town and a veteran of a foreign war and I was told that there's only like eight of them and they're not even asking for a reduction just that their taxes stay the same, so I, I, I feel strongly about someone who's been in town that long, served our country and if we do a little something to ease the burden and they're not even asking for a reduction, just that they get no surprises and their taxes don't go up. And I was hoping that you guys would, would be on board with bringing that up to discuss at the next meeting and maybe figure out.
In fact, I think we had discussed it once before, but definitely, and that's the kinda thing that by adding that to the agenda, that would also give town staff a chance to verify the legalities of doing that.
Yeah, absolutely, the, the, the taxes are, are developed and overseen by state statute, so what we would do is we would talk to both the Revenue Collector and the Assessor and have them reach out or look into what programs are out there that would mirror this, or what would be legal for a municipality to do or, you know, put it out there to find out, you know, to our town attorney if, if this is something that can be done.
Okay, I, I would appreciate that, Andy, and I'm sure those nine veterans would appreciate that too, if we can somehow find a legal means to get that done.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Pete?
Yeah, Mark, absolutely full support of bringing that up, so I appreciate it and I look forward to learning more about what we can do for our veterans.
Thanks, Pete.
Absolutely.
Perfect. Beautiful, thank you. And this is how it's supposed to work, so it'll be good. Perfect. Any other new business? Hearing none? There was one thing actually that I wanted and I've already reached out to Andy on it to either, and, and whether or not it'll actually be a topic, I don't know, but it's the sightlines on the rails to trails crossings, at least on our streets, we can't do anything with the state, but I, I had sent an email to Andy, so maybe next, next week or next meeting, he can kinda give us an update as to what is able to be done or what have you.
I, I can do it now, I know it's not really on the agenda and I apologize, I, now that you reminded me, I meant to respond, that was, I think you sent them on the weekend, I read them and I was gonna respond on Monday, but we already put the wheels in motion, Kevin Kelly, the Public Works Director, has already agreed to get out there and push those sightlines back on those trail entrances, we, we really can't just pluck stop signs in, there's a, there's a formula and legal qualifications that require when you can put a stop sign and when you can't, that wouldn't justify stop signs, we could put illuminated crosswalk things in there at, at an expense, but for right now, Danny, we're gonna get out there and mow those and, and open those sightlines up with the, the over the rail mowers and such.
With that, with, what, what, what that was all about, I, I, actually I was heading down Graville Road, at, at, both Graville and North Pond, you can't see people, especially on bikes, if they're riding a bike until they're in the road, you know, it, it, it just happened so fast with all the brush and all and, and I'm hoping that, you know, either clear it back or something, so that was what the, the request was or the concern. You know, it's, you know, people are usually pretty good, but, you know, understanding pedestrians may have the right of way, if they get hit, they would be dead right. It just happened so fast, you know, and even going, you know, 20 miles an hour or whatever is still, it, it just, it was, it was surprising, I mean, I literally caught something moving through the brush and it was a bicycle, it's coming right across and it was like, oh, so that was what that was all about.
Okay.
And, and Dan, you're right, North, North Pond Road is the worst one to me, cuz it's coming down the hill and that, that's, that's a tough one, that's even worse than Graville cuz there's not as much traffic on Graville, but people fly up and down North Pond Road.
Yeah, and it's, it's like, there's just no time to react.
I, I agree.
So, that was just my concern, anyway. Okay, our consent agenda, these are items that are considered to be routine in nature, which the Board may or may not need to discuss individually and may be voted on as a group, any Board Member who wishes to discuss a particular item in this section may request the Chair to remove it for later discussion and a separate vote if necessary. On this one here, on A, it was 10A1, at the May 6th, 2021 meeting, Gail wanted it to be better described. As, as for, you know, what the, God, it was, you know, and she's not here, basically the options for the roof. So this is what was garnered out of the recordings of, of the minutes and so this would be the change. Am I, am I saying this right, Andy?
Yep.
Yeah, I, I remember that, Dan. Yeah, I, I remember that, Dan. You're right.
Okay, so um, that would be those minutes and then uh. We would have the approval of the minutes of May twentieth, regular meeting and then the tax refunds as uh listed. So do we want to do this as? And, and a group of, of all of these items or we want to separate them?
I'm fine with all of them, Dan. Peter?
Okay. And I'm just clarifying that there's no issues with uh.
I would read the motion.
You will, all of them?
There's a motion that shows that you're amending. To item nine A on page four.
Okay, cause. So uh, making a motion that we amend. The minutes of the May sixth, two thousand twenty one regular meeting. To read as follows, move the Hebrew Board of Selectment approve uh. The May sixth, two thousand twenty one regular meeting minutes with the following amendment to item nine on page four. Add to the following after. B P D Roof Consulting Report, the three options that were presented, option A. Five hundred and fifty five thousand five hundred and eighteen dollars, option to be funded. Option B, four hundred and sixty three thousand seven hundred and fifteen dollars. And option C, three hundred and seventy five thousand one hundred and forty four dollars, option to be bid. So here, uh, your pleasure on that. Any discussion? Hearing none, Mark?
Mark Rivera, I.
Peter?
Peter Casper, I.
And myself, Dan Larson, I. And then the next motion, we move the Hebrew Board of Selectment approve the following consent agenda items. And motions contained therein as if individually adopted. That would be the approval of the minutes of the May twentieth. Two thousand twenty one regular meeting and then the tax refunds as listed. And again, uh, a further discussion? Hearing none, Mark?
Mark Rivera, I.
Uh, Peter?
Peter Casper, I.
And myself, Dan Larson, I. Okay, that was probably the cleaner way to do that. So that's what I wanted to verify. Okay, thank you. Our next thing would be our laser reports. Uh, Mark?
Hey, Peter, how do you like that traffic in front of Ram High School?
Hey, as long as you're there, I'm comfortable.
Okay, and, and as you probably noticed.
I send Diane normally, so when I go, I'm like, oh my goodness.
Hey, I can't blame you. Um, so, so traffic and excitement i- is uh. Accelerating pretty quickly towards the end of the year. It's actually becoming a fun time of year. The proms this weekend. There's all kinds of functions and cookouts. They're playing the assassins game, which you're probably familiar with, Peter, where they have a, an assignment where they squirt gun each other and. Um, it's actually good, clean fun, even though the name is a little misleading and um, we're getting ready for the graduation. Um, we've lost some parking, which I'm not sure what we're going to do with that. Um, actually, Andy, I should talk to you about this later. If maybe we can use the uh, the, behind the um, the library as a spillover event. So I don't know if that's possible or. Is that something we could discuss and maybe arrange?
Yeah, why not?
Okay, thank you. So uh, other than that, the eighteenth is, is the last day and um, I'm actually awaiting that. There's eleven days of school left. I'm counting them down by the minute. And my summer vacation will begin. Uh, other than that, everything's going fine over there, guys.
Great. What about the parking behind the uh firehouse off Liberty?
Yeah.
Or on Peddleton?
Thanks, Dan. We were thinking of that too. I just forgot about that, but that's a great idea. It's, it's not, it's not too bad of a walk either.
No.
It's a good idea. Thank you. I'll, I'll include that in our plan too. Thanks, Dan.
You're welcome. Okay, Pete?
Um, uh, the Board of Finance, uh, as Andy mentioned, and, and I'm, I'm gonna, if I, if I may, just prefer, since we have the chair on the, on the line. Significant discussions surrounding the audit and some of the challenges through that transition and obviously in a much better place with the um. The new audit firm or the audit firm that we're using, but I, if I, if I may, I'll, if I could have the Jim and Vessi just comment on, on the audit and anything else he wants to talk about, because it was a pretty, uh, pretty substantive meeting if, if Dave, you're on the line still.
Sure, sure. Okay, hey guys, um, thanks Pete. Yeah, you guys were already went through the mill rate uh and the departmental transfer. So thanks for approving those. And as Andy mentioned in his report, uh, we got the audit, uh, going through it. Um, and the, the audit's through June thirtieth of two thousand twenty. And there's a certain amount of findings, uh, both uh with the town as well as the Board of Ed. And so Elaine, as Andy mentioned, Elaine is um. Visually going through those. Uh, what we'd like, ideally, you'd like to try to close those. Uh, by June of this year, so that when the next year's audit comes in, you don't get the same finding. So Elaine is working to do that. And then we also reached out to the superintendent um to get the Board of Ed to do the same. And I think we're going to be talking to the Board of Ed at their meeting. Next week just to um impress upon them if they could uh close out those findings by the end of June on their side so that the, the audit for next year is, is clear. So that's about it. Any questions on it?
Um, I know Mel had, had, had some questions as to enrollment figures. Um, and just wondering if, if any kind of. If, if it was going to be a, a reasonable request to try to have a meeting with the three entities or, or something, Andy or.
I, I know Mel's reached out to the Chairman of the Board of Ed and still hoping to obtain some of that information or um. You know, to uh clarify uh the question. So I think that is in motions as we speak.
Okay.
You know, and one of the things that I, sort of an observation, and I know it's come up before when I was on the Board of Finance and it may not be in our direct purview, but one of the things that. Still concerns me and I have to continue to educate myself on is uh the fact that we don't have one financial management structure. We always seem to not quite be in alignment with the Board of Ed and it, it just, this audit discussion in this whole, this last meeting keeps, seems to bring to light again the need. Maybe have a little bit of a better structure. I know that's a big issue and it's not necessarily in our purview, but something that I'm. Uh, I just wanted to be, I want to educate myself more on it and it's something I think we can discuss at a future date.
I, as I say, I look at it as, you know, it, it may not be within our purview, but uh. You know, we are the three main entities in a sense of, of the financial stability of the town. And we really need to be able to have some, some good quality, open discussions. It's, it's just reality and to, to not have those discussions. Is doing a disservice to the community, I feel.
No, no, I think you're right. From a private sector, to me, it's a head scratcher, but I, you know, again, that's, that's not. Um, from the structure that we're, we're referring to, but still it's, it would seem like we could, uh, we could improve that process for the benefit of the town, no question.
Thank you.
So that's what I have. I don't have anything additional on parking wreck. Uh, Andy covered uh, you know, the pertinent issues there, so I'm done with my update. Thank you.
Okay, and I was unable to attend the fire department uh meeting the other night, but Pete is really hitting the ground running from the way it sounds. Um, which is good, which is good. Uh, you know, he's, he's, you know, he's going to make some very positive changes, I think, within the fire department. As I was saying, uh, the eighteenth and nineteenth are the services for Patty Griffin, uh, past fire police captain who passed away. Boy, I want to say last week, I, I, I think. Um, so that's going on. Um, the, he, he's heard Properties Commission. Um, the Peter's house, we got some lights up and running. Um. So that was good. Um, hopefully we can open it up. Uh, I know they're also talking about doing some tours. Of both, you know, some of the schoolhouses and of the observation tower. Uh, so that'll be coming up and those dates will be posted. I don't have them right with me. And I think that's all I've got. So. Uh, Andy, do you have anything on your area?
I received from WPCA a tentative schedule from the contractor. They're still waiting on the supplies to come in, uh, parts for the upgrades for the pump stations. But a tentative contract was sent out and I can send that to the Board of Selectmen if you guys are interested in that.
Okay, and did you also want to do anything uh with uh Chatham Health? I, I noticed that the uh COVID reports are, are still looking good. Uh, it appears, I'm not sure if we're still yellow. Uh.
No, we're, we're, we're down the green now.
We are in the green, okay.
Yeah. Which is a good thing. Um, we've have let. Boards and commissions start to meet in public as long as they can do it in a safe manner with the social distancing and they don't have too many um. Public participants where you can't keep the social distancing and that's required. Uh, some of them. Uh, like this board, I believe, I don't want to speak for the selectmen, um, like the, this form of meeting. So they're still working on the legislation on. Uh, this is still, you can continue this way or in a hybrid or a little combination of both, but um. Some boards and commissions and towns are finding this um a little bit more accessible to public um and are continuing that. Other ones are going back in person. I know the Board of Ed had reached out to me. And asked me if they could start meeting in person and I sent them what uh we were doing at the town side. So I'm not sure what they came up with. How they're going to proceed, but uh it is permitted as long as you can do it safely. So unfortunately for the Board of Selectment. And the meeting room that we have at the town hall, that wouldn't be sufficient if we were to get. Twenty or more people for meetings. So every meeting would have to be at the library and we don't know. If every first and third Thursday would be available. So we've got a little bit of some scheduling stuff going on and not that I'm trying to sway. How you guys feel about going back in person, but just that's a reality. We'd have to move everything over there, have to make sure the rooms were available, but that could be done if that's the wishes of the board.
Mr. Chairman, could we, I know we passed that section, but maybe should we put it on the agenda to at least discuss it at a future meeting?
Sure, sure. That could be something that could be added. Um, yeah. It definitely could be added. Um. Yeah, as I say, I, I feel that this becomes far more accessible to everybody, you know, since very few people don't have some sort of um. Computer or, or means to, to get on, to get on. But yeah, no, let's, we'll have it, we'll have a discussion on it. Sure. Okay, beautiful. Um, I think that's it.
Uh, public comment? A public comment, yeah.
Right.
Um, if anyone has public comment, if you could just jot your name down in the chat box. Um, Neil Amway did pop in. Um, during, I think, consent agenda. Um, he said, thank you for approving that agreement and he wishes everybody well.
Oh.
He said, Penelope says hello. So he was glad to hear that that was approved. Um, and there do not appear to be any other public comments.
Thank you, everyone.
Assume, are you going to assume Gail's role, Dan, and call the time and, and what's adjourned?
I, nah, I'm gonna let you do that.
I, I don't even, I don't know what she says. I'm so happy. I, I don't even recall the words. Just, I'm just joyous at that moment.
Well, so at, uh, call the meeting to conclusion at eight oh four PM. Thank you all for attending. Have a safe and wonderful weekend and may it be out of the forties, not like last weekend.
Always going to be out of the forties.